The anchor location statement, because that was read last meeting by Brenda. So we will move along to the approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion for that?
I move to approve the minutes.
Was it, who was that? Our major? Was that you, Adrian?
That was Sarah.
Sarah, sorry.
But I seconded it.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go down the roll call. Maureen.
Yes.
Adrian.
Yes.
John.
Yeah.
Andreas?
I will, yes.
Thank you. And Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, that most in passes unanimously. Thank you all. The next up would be the report of the Chair and the Vice Chair, and since Brenda is not here, and I have nothing, we can just move along to the report of the Director, Nick.
Thank you. The only thing that I have to report on is the status of the proposal to remove special exceptions from the zoning code. The City Council held a public hearing last week and received a few comments about outdoor dining when it's next to residential uses, and so they've asked us to provide some options to help further buffer those compared to what was in the proposal. So we're working on that, and hopefully those will be back on their agenda as soon as possible. And that is it.
Nick, can you give any insight or an update on to the appeal I'm hearing that happened recently?
Oh, yes, sorry. There was a, the Planning Commission approved a plan development on 2700 South back in June, early June. That decision was appealed last Thursday or Wednesday, or I don't know, within the last two weeks. Hearing Officer heard that appeal and issued a decision to uphold the Planning Commission's approval of that project.
Great, thank you.
Moving on.
Moving on, moving up. Okay, well, with that, we will begin the public, or the agenda portion, our first item up. Drop box is a little out of order, so one moment. There we go. Okay, so our first one up is we have a conditional use for church, the Samoan Independence Seventh Day Adventist Church, 1612, 1624 South, 10th West, PLN PCM 2021-00264. And the planner is Amy Thompson.
Hi, good evening. I'm just waiting for presenter power so I can share my screen. Oh, there we go. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so this is a, let's see. This is a conditional use proposal submitted by Jeffrey Gardner. He's the architect representing the property owner of the Samoan Independent Seventh Day Adventist Church. And they are requesting conditional use approval for a new church building to be located at 1612 to 1624 South, 1000 and West. Condition, a church is a conditional use in the RMF 35 zone, so that's the reason that the proposal is before they commissioned this evening. And staff is recommending approval of the proposed condition, conditional use. The new church building includes a multifunctional gym space, which will double as a chapel and sanctuary space. The project also includes two classrooms and a kitchen and support spaces. Surface parking provided for the project on the north of the site. And the project, the design of the project meets all the zoning regulations, and those are outlined in Attachment D of the staff report. The project site is currently two separate parcels, and these parcels will need to be consolidated to meet the lot width requirements for this use in the RMF 35 zone. The applicants have submitted a law consolidation application, and this requirement was noted in the next steps portion of the staff report. And then just a quick note on the background of the proposal. The Planning Commission did grant conditional use approval for the Samoan Independent Seventh Day Adventist Church at the same location in August of 2018. The previous proposal was the same as the new proposal apart from the design of the new building. You can see the rendering on the bottom portion of the screen there. That was the previous design that was proposed. And the church that formerly existed on the site, that photo shown on the top there, that was demolished in 2018, but I just wanted to have those on there as a reference. Conditional use approvals are only valid for a year unless a building permit, complete building plans have been submitted, or unless a building permit has issued, and so this 2018 approval expired, and that's the reason why a new application was required. These photos are, these are some photos of the site. The top one is the existing site view looking west from 1000 West. The bottom picture is the development across the street, directly across the street from the proposal. Again, standing on 1000 West, and that's the development to the north side of the proposal. That building that you can see on the left there in the picture is also a church. And then on the bottom, you can see the development to the south of the subject property. And this slide outlines the public process. We sent out notice to the recognized organization. Early notification of the project was sent to property owners and residents within 300 feet. Public hearing notice, and we have not received any public comments on this proposal as of today. And staff has reviewed the proposal for compliance with the conditional use standards, and we are recommending approval of the proposal. And I can answer any questions, and the applicant is also available to answer questions on the proposal.
All right, thank you, Amy. Do any commissioners have a question for the planner assistant? Great, so the applicant Jeffrey Gardner is here. Mr. Gardner, do you have a presentation? You want to go?
I don't have a further presentation other than what's shown, really, that summarized it very well relative to the use and what it's going to look like on the site, so I don't have any.
Okay. Okay, then. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Gardner? Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing. Nick, do you see anyone in attendance from the community council?
Um, I don't see any names that I recognize, but I'm not exactly sure which community council this is. Amy, do you know off the top of your head?
Not off the top of my head, but just one second. I do know that we didn't get any response from the community council when I sent it out, but let me look who the chair is.
Well, let me just give a brief outline to the public. If there is an, if this is an item you wish to speak, in the bottom right-hand corner, you'll see a hand that looks like this. If you'll click that, you'll be raising your hand, and that will let us know that you do wish to speak. Please only use that on the topic that you do want to speak on. That might help identify if there is anyone here that wishes to give some comments.
So it's the Glendale Community Council Chair, and it's Turner Britton is the Chair of that community council.
Yeah, I do not see Turner in attendance. I do not see any hands raised.
And Nick, do you also want to give the email that people can email you comments that you're monitoring tonight?
Yes, if anybody is having difficulty figuring out how to raise your hands or have any other issues, you can send an email to planning comments at slcgov.com. And if you're looking for the hand, again, it's in the, it's, it should be at the bottom right-hand side of your screen on most people's screens. It's a really, really small hand, so if you see it and you want to speak, click on that. But I am not seeing any hands coming up, and I, John, I don't believe we've had any emails requesting to speak on this, have we?
We have not received anything.
Okay. I feel confident, then, we can close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners. This time, does any commissioners have any questions, thoughts, comments, discretion on this item, or I am willing to entertain a motion?
Madam Vice Chair, I will entertain a motion for you.
Thank you, Carolyn.
All right now, let's do it. This is for the church slash place of worship at 1612-1624 South, 1000 West, conditional use. Petition number is PLN PCM 2021-00264.
Great, any seconds? Oh, sorry. Sorry, keep going.
Okay, and that's the planning staff finds that the project generally meets the applicable standards of approval, and therefore recommends the planning commission approve the conditional use for the proposed church slash place of worship. And like I said, the petition is PLN PCM 2021-002264.
We need, we need words of actual emotion being made and the reasons for the motion. Generally, that's, I move to approve this based on findings in the staff report.
I move to approve this petition based on the findings in the staff report that was just presented.
I'll second that.
That's Sarah? Okay. Okay, I have a motion from Carolyn and a second from Sarah. We'll go down the list. Maureen?
Yes.
Adrian?
Yes, and I would just point out that the motion sheet doesn't have the correct motion, hence the wording error originally.
Yes, you're right. Thank you. Carolyn?
Agreed.
John?
Yes.
Andreas?
I will vote yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, that petition passes unanimously. Thank you all. We will move on to the second item on our agenda, which is loading. Sorry, my internet's being slow here. Okay, this is a petition for an over height fence at 2589 East Village Circle, PLN PCM 2020-00755. I'm questioning, are these petition numbers 2020 correct, or should they be 2021?
No, that's correct.
Okay, PLN PCM 2020-00755, the planner is Amanda, and
I also am just trying to share the share the screen. I don't have that.
Give me a second, Amanda, hang on.
All right, I can do that. Thanks. Okay, can you see my screen now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, so this is a special exception request from Michael and Sue Workman, the property owners of 2589 East Village Circle. They are requesting approval for a rear yard fence that exceeds six feet in height. The combined height of the fence and proposed retaining wall would measure seven and a half feet from grade. And then to speak to your question about the petition number, they did apply for a special exception in August of 2020 after a neighbor submitted a complaint about a fence being built without, without a permit. And so we've been working with the applicant since then, and there's been a couple of planners on the, on the project, but we decided to bring it to the Planning Commission because of the neighbors' opposition, and then also the property owner wanted to just have a public hearing and move forward from here after being told to be denied at an administrative level. And so in residential zoning districts, fences and walls are allowed up to four feet in height between the front property line and the front facade of the building where the primary entrance is located. And then they are allowed up to six feet in height in the rear and side yard area. Additional height for fences and walls may be requested through this special exception process if the planning commission or director, planning director finds out the extra height is necessary for the security of property in question, and if it's determined that there will be no negative impacts upon the established character of the affected neighborhood and streetscape, maintenance of public and private views, and matters of public safety. So this slide has a few things. So there's the site plan on the left, top left, and then elevation of the fence, so.
Your screen is not forwarding, so we just see your, your initial screen still.
Well, that isn't useful. Let me okay. Let me stop sharing. I'm not sure. Sorry, give me a second. Okay, I'm gonna stop, and I'm gonna try again. Just never, never smooth, right? Let me see if I'm, I have two screens up, so let me see if this one. Okay, I can see that I'm sharing the PowerPoint, so just let me know if it.
Yes, now we see the, the screen, the slide you're talking about. Thank you.
Is it, yeah, thanks. Okay, let me, let me change it. Can you see it moving now?
Yes.
Okay, okay, perfect. So I'll just quickly repeat, fences are allowed up to four feet in the front yard of a property and then six feet in the rear and side yards, and the planning commission and director can approve taller fencing if the proposal is necessary for the security of the property, and then if there are no negative effects on the surrounding neighborhood. Okay, so here is the site plan. So the applicant has already built the fence, and like I mentioned, there was a civil enforcement case, and so they did take down the the top portion of the fence, but the special exception request is for the northern 48 feet of fence height, and there is not the, the property changes grade, and so a special exception is not required for the additional 62 feet of length. The bottom photos are from the south of the property to the north, and you can see the first two are the existing fence that measures six feet from finished grade, which is where we measure fence height, and then the photos in red correlate to the site plan, and that's where the exception is being requested. And so, so I took some photos of the property. The applicant has stated that the additional fence height is to secure the property and also provide privacy for their home as well as the neighbors to the west. You can see the property to the west in the left-hand column, and then the fence when I was standing at grade. So they can see the, they're uncomfortable with being able to see into the neighbors' windows, and they also don't want people to be able to see into their rear windows. So the two photos on the left are standing on top of the steps of the rear yard and then at grade. And then, so I asked permission to go onto the backyard of the property directly west of them, which is the property where the owner who has voiced opposition at 1335 South Wasatch Drive. I did the same thing. I stood on the top of their steps and took photos and then stood at grade. The top left photo, that's the fence that's six feet from finished grade on the subject property. It's approximately 10 and a half feet from the grade of the property on Wasatch Drive. And then the other photo below it is standing on their rear steps, and you can see that, you know, the windows are visible, about half of them, and the other two photos are standing at grade. And so while they are visible from from the steps, if the height is increased, it will block the full house, but also the mountains, and that is the that is the concern of the property owners to the west is the light and the view. So when reviewing the proposal, we look at specific special exception standards for additional fence height, as well as the general standards for special exceptions. And based on, based on the existing fence and the proposal, it doesn't comply with five of the eight standards, which are listed right here, as well as in the staff report. And then it doesn't comply with seven, or three of the seven general special exception standards. So in regards to the specific standards, the fence and retaining wall are not transparent, and there are no ornamental features or architectural embellishments proposed. The overall character and design of residential neighborhood is for fences to be no more than six feet tall within the rear yard. The land uses surrounding the property are residential, and this is an established residential neighborhood. And staff hasn't concluded that the additional height would enhance the security of the property, which would, which is one of the goals of the property owner. And then the other three standards are not applicable because the fence is in the rear yard, and they refer to front yard fences or fences along driveways, so they don't apply to this proposal. And then in terms of the general special exception standards, the increased height would provide more privacy, and, but would, it could also have a negative impact on the budding property due to the change in grade. And staff doesn't believe it's appropriate to permit a fence that'll measure 10 and a half feet from the neighboring property. And then the, the overall proposed height is not compatible in residential neighborhoods. A public process, it did start in October 2020, so the petition was originally assigned to Myra. When she, when she changed position, she reassigned it to Chris Earl, and now it's been assigned to me. So it's, it's taken a while, and that's why we just wanted to get there on the planning commission agenda so they can move forward with their project. Three individuals have voiced their opposition. It's the property owners to the, the west, and then I also got a phone call earlier today that I put in a Dropbox, a summary of that opposing it. Staff recommends the commission deny their request for additional fence height at 2589 East Village Circle because staff does not believe the specific special exception standards for additional height have been met, as well as general special exception standards. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Amanda. Commissioners, any questions for staff at this time? All right, thank you, Amanda. Commissioners, any questions for staff at this time? Okay, I believe the applicant is here, Representative Michael Workman.
Hi.
If you want to make a presentation, you can do so now. You have up to ten minutes, and the time is yours.
Thank you. I will not be making a presentation, but I appreciate the opportunity. I just have a few things to touch on from our position. Thank you for the opportunity to come firstly and and meet in this forum. We appreciate that. It's been quite a long process. And we, this is nothing personal with our neighbors to the west. They're very nice people and a great family, so this has nothing more to do than with primarily our privacy. The security issue, we haven't, haven't had any issues to arise with that. It's the, if you've been out to the property, the pictures I I feel show that it's more at a distance than it really is. It's looking right down into the private areas of their home and then into the private areas of ours. And so it's, it's very disconcerting, and and we feel the need to have our window coverings in the private areas of our home. And in the front of our house, we, you know, would have our window coverings up, but would like to have the window coverings up more in the back of the house. But it's, it's really close proximity, and in the grade angle, we're looking right down into their house, and they vice versa into ours. I, I think that in terms of the staff report, I would respectfully disagree with with the section twenty-one A dot fifty-two dot zero-three-zero and and specifically F under that, which says it's keeping within character of the neighborhood and urban design of the city. We, we provided some photos of other fences. First, a quick tangent, the the staff member prior to Amanda, Chris Earl, who I'm sure all of you know had passed away unexpectedly. And Chris had encouraged us to go and and find pictures of fences and examples of fences where the height exception was commonplace. And it's very difficult to do because you're asking to take pictures of people's property without permission. Or anyway, it's, it's a very uncomfortable situation to start snapping pictures of people's properties. But with that grade all the way down Wasatch Drive, which faces the front of, the front of thirteen thirty-five faces Wasatch Drive, that entire length of Wasatch Drive from where we are at thirteen hundred south, all the way down at least ten or more blocks to twenty-one hundred south and beyond is on a grade where it's commonplace for the the retaining wall and fence combination to be well over eight feet. And so that the downhill neighbor would be, would have a fence at grade that that is very similar to what we're proposing. And we did submit some pictures of fences that people allowed us to to take pictures of, and one was eight foot, ten inches. And but we, staff chose not to use those because I guess she couldn't verify whether or not they were permitted. And I, we do feel that it, that it goes within the character of that neighborhood because of the grade. So in her rationale, the reason that F doesn't comply is is that we can't prove that those fences are permitted. However, the character of the neighborhood is is littered with them as far the way south and then east up into the foothills. There's many, many, many examples of backyard fences where the downhill neighbor is is looking at a fence that's, you know, eight feet or beyond. So I respectfully disagree with that, with that rationale. And that's primarily the reason, if the, if, from the pictures that you can see that staff has provided that height where where the where the horizontal boards are in the picture in the top left, that would be six feet from grade. So that would be if we were denied the exception, that would be the height of the fence. Essentially, there's a cap on there that brings it up to six feet. It's a two-by-four cap. And and so that's, that's what it would look like. We're asking for those three boards that would bring it up that additional amount. I also would say that on on page seven, staff has commented that we would, that we have either voiced or documented someplace that I can't find, that we would immediately appeal a denial from this hearing. That's simply not true. We're willing to accept the findings of the commission, and and we're willing to move forward in whatever way you all see fit. So I'm not sure where staff has that, but that's not something that that my wife Sue or I expressed that we would do, and I can't find it anywhere in writing that I said that. So if I, if it is someplace, then then I'm, I'm telling now that we will not be appealing this decision. And and that's, that's my presentation or or position today.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Workman. I would just like to state that appealing a decision, whether you do or not, is entirely your right and would have no bearing on our decision here tonight. So whatever you said or didn't say, you you do have the right to appeal any decision we make. So just keep that in mind.
Thank you, and I, and I thank you, and I understand that, but I was not pleased that that was stated as our position.
I understand. I understand what you're saying now. Okay, thank you, Mr. Workman. All right, commissioners, any questions for Mr. Workman at this time? Okay, hearing none, I will move to open the public hearing. If you are in attendance of this meeting and you wish to speak, please click the hand in the lower right-hand portion of your screen. It basically looks like a hand. That will alert us that you do wish to speak. If you are having trouble with any of the technology tonight, you can send an email directly to public dot comments. Wait, what is it? Planning dot comments, Nick? Send the email for me, Nick.
Yep, planning dot comments.
Planning at slcgov dot com. They're being monitored as we speak. We can get that on the public record as well. So with that, the public hearing is open. Nick, do you see anyone from the community council first off?
I do not see any names I recognize, but it looks like a Sue Workman, who I'm assuming is one of the applicant, part of the applicants, has her hand up if you want to hear from Sue now or after the public hearing.
No, we can.
Let's, all right, I'm gonna unmute you, Sue. Hang on. Sue, can you hear us?
Yes, hi.
Ms. Workman, if you would state your name for the public record, and you will have two minutes.
Sure, it's Sue Workman.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Actually, I appreciate my husband speaking, agree with everything. I just wanted to verify too that the three boards, looking at the photos that you all are looking at right now, it does not go up to that top rail. You know, there's an open space and a top rail. It's not the end of the height of the fence. It's just three boards worth. It's about half that height, just just as a visual for people to know that. And also, I know Amanda started the the call by saying that the neighbors complained that there was no permit. And I just, I do want to say that again, these are neighbors that we like and that are, that are good people, and that we actually planned because of the disrepair. Our original fence was falling over for years. And we both, both our neighbors and ourselves planned the fence together, that we were building this fence together, and they were totally on board with it. And it only came until after the fence was built that we found out that they did not like it. This was always supposed to be something that was mutually beneficial as far as our privacy and that we, you know, took out all kinds of trees and everything so that we could increase the light and still have a privacy fence. So it was a little bit of a surprise for us to even find out that they they didn't like it, to be honest. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out there, that this was something that that we didn't just do without talking to our neighbors. Originally, this was nothing that we just threw up without their consent. And then I, you know, this is just kind of a surprise to us as well. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Workman. Nick, any other hands raised?
Let's see, I am not seeing any other hands. Sue, if you wouldn't mind clicking on that hand again, it it unraises it, so then we know that you're, there you go. Perfect. Thank you so much. I do not see any other hands raised. John, have we had any emails on on this?
Yes. Okay. We did get one, and I can read that for you if you'd like.
Thank you, please.
All right, well, this is from, and I'm, I'm not gonna say this name correctly, and I apologize. It's Wei Ping Zhang. Hello, I will not approve of the overheight fence between our backyards. I work remotely at home, would love to enjoy the beautiful scenery ride outside our home and backyard, of which the fence would interfere with immensely. We take great joy in gardening in our backyards during the summer, and the extended height of the fence would block much needed sunlight from the flowers and vegetables we spent so much time and effort cultivating. I would implore you to consider my perspective of the situation or reject the application for an overheight fence. The previous fence stood six feet tall, and we would like it to remain so now. Thank you for your kind consideration.
That was the only.
Only one we got.
Okay. Seeing that, I will close the public hearing for this agenda item and bring it back to the commission. Any questions, thoughts, comments for staff or the applicant, or a discussion and or a motion?
I have a question for staff, and we've done enough these overheight fences that I'm surprised I don't know this. But when when there are two, when it's a fence and there's two different grades, you know, having a six-foot fence on one side and a ten-foot fence on the other, I guess we go with the, I mean, how does that get measured? And why, this just feels like, I don't know that it impacts this, what our decision will be, but I'm super curious how we're measuring a six-foot fence when the neighbor does see a ten-foot fence. Can you answer, is that enough of a question? Does that make sense?
You're asking the same question that I started asking. No, no, it is, it is confusing, but we measure from finished grade of the property where the fence is on. So the applicants have said that the fence is completely on their property, so we measure from from that. But if you're, my screen is still shared, so if you look at the bottom right photo, that fence on the right-hand side is about eight and a half feet from their, the subject property, but six feet from the neighboring property. And so we would measure from the neighboring property because they own it, and it's technically on their property. So it is, it is, it is hard, though, to define those property lines.
That actually makes sense. So the, the one neighbor could have a six-foot fence, and the one, the other one, if it's different grades, then it's gonna be two different fences right next to each other. But you have to go with the, okay, that that actually makes some sense, so I appreciate that, the answer to that.
And Commissioner Ricker, this is John. We, we, we were asking the same questions all the time ourselves. But I think one way to kind of look at it is, you know, everybody has a right to have a six-foot fence in their yard. If we measured from the neighbor's yard, they would really only be able to have like a four-foot fence on their side. And so we worked with the zoning administrator to make sure that everything met those standards.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense. I get it. So thank you for the extra clarification.
Anything else, commissioners?
I guess I have a question for staff as well. Since we've established, you know, the, it goes, I guess, the fence starts to count on finished, you know, whichever side has a finished, I guess, finished base of that fence. I noticed there was something about if it had ornamental features or architectural embellishments or something, it can go beyond that. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, so that's one of the standards that can be met to to have an overheight fence. If there's just, just something a bit, a bit fancy around top that exceeds that that six feet. In this case, there isn't. It's a, you know, it's a solid wood fence that isn't transparent.
Gotcha. That was actually my next question, too. If it was a fence that was, I guess, transparent, they could possibly go beyond those, beyond that six foot?
Possibly. I brought a fence here a few months ago, and, you know, the the conversation was back and forth on about the transparency. But, you know, I think it's, it's still a case-by-case basis. And but on the, on the last meeting we had, I believe, you know, we went back and forth a lot about the transparency of it, and is it eighty percent transparent or is it not? But, you know, in this case, it's it's not eighty percent transparent. So it doesn't meet, it does not meet that standard.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Amanda, just to clarify, I believe from the last meeting, that special exception was if it's approved, then it had to be eighty percent transparent, correct? If it meant, there were certain, there are certain things in the code that would allow an overheight fence, but it, but it would be required that it be eighty percent transparent. I think I guess swimming pool is one of them, right?
Not sure of the swimming pool. I haven't, I haven't thought that. Yes, that's, I believe that's the the consensus at the end of the, at the end of the meeting. Because some of these aren't applicable. You don't have to meet all of them, which we also discussed, because it's not a front yard fence, so it's not creating a wall in effect, right? It's not on a, it's not on a driveway, so it's not impacting traffic. So for this staff report, I just looked at the ones that were applicable to the rear yard.
Okay. All right, commissioners, any other questions or comments or a motion?
I'm ready to make a motion unless someone else has a question or comment. Okay.
Go for it.
Based on the findings listed in the staff report, the information presented and input received during the public hearing, a move that the planning commission deny the special exception request, a number PLN PCM twenty twenty dash zero zero seven five five as proposed because evidence has not been presented that demonstrates the proposal complies with the standards listed in the motion sheets.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Sarah, and a second by Maureen. Any discussion to that motion? Great, let's take a roll call. Sarah?
Yes.
Andreas?
Oh, yes.
Okay, John?
Yeah.
Carolyn?
I agree.
Adrian?
Yes.
And Maureen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all that motion. It has unanimous support. Okay, moving on to our next agenda item.
Yes. We have a, someone who raised their hand after you closed that public hearing. I'd like to ask the person if they intended to speak on that last item or on this item.
Okay.
Ted, I'm gonna unmute you.
I'm sorry, this, this is Ted Canold. You there?
We're here, Ted. I see that your hand's raised. Did you want to speak on a specific item?
No, I never got, I raised my hand, I never did get called. I was trying to get in. I just wanted to bring up one point on the last, I know that it's been voted on and everything now, but one important point I wanted to bring up is on the south end of the fence that is six foot on the workman's side. We're proposing to bring the other side since the workman's grade drops, but the neighbor to the west did not drop. The fence is going to remain the same height from their side all the way across. Whereas it's dropping now on the workman's side significantly on the north side where the proposed addition was. It does not affect the, how tall the fence was on their side on the, all the way across, if that makes sense. So if you take their grade, their grade remains the same all the way across. Now it's lowering that grade for just the forty-two feet where they're looking through. where they're looking through. And if you look at those pictures closely, there is no view except for the workman's house for that 42 feet.
All right. Mr. Scholz, I think at this point, because the planning, sorry, I did not see that your hand was up and there were no hands raised after we checked and after we read the email. So at this point, if there's, the planning commission can make a decision as to, to recall that decision and open up the public hearing again if they choose. But that's up to the, up to the commission to.
Okay.
Okay. Um, thank you. I will give commissioners, if someone who voted on this would like to recall it, you have the opportunity to do so now. Okay, hearing done, then our decision will stand. All right, are we okay to move on to the next agenda item?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. All right, this is the third agenda or third item on our agenda. It is the form-based SE second story rooftop commercial uses. PLN PCM 2021-00431. And the planner is once again Amy Thompson. Welcome back.
Thank you. Happy to be here. I will share my screen again once I get handed those presenter powers over.
There you go.
Okay. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Great. So this is a proposal by Bill Grodnick. He submitted an application for a zoning text amendment related to second story rooftop commercial uses that would impact all properties in the FBSE zone, which is the form-based special purpose corridor edge sub district. And it would impact property citywide. This map shows all the FBSE zoned property within the city. Staff is recommending that the commission forward a positive recommendation, recommendation to the city council regarding this request. Uh, the FBSE zone currently limits commercial or non-residential uses to the first two stories and a height of 30 feet. The proposed text amendment would allow for rooftop commercial uses above the second story, subject to meeting that 30 foot height requirement. The proposal does not change the land use table. Existing permitted and conditional uses will remain the same. The proposed text amendment is outlined in that chart in the underlined text. I do want to briefly touch on the background of this proposal. The petition was submitted by the owner of the property at 2166 South 9th East, which is in the FBSE zone. The applicant has an existing two-story building that he intends to use as a restaurant, which is a permitted use in the FBSE zone. He'd like the ability to add outdoor dining to the rooftop above the second story. But because of these limitations within the FBSE zone, that's why he submitted this text amendment. Although the applicant's applying for these changes because of plans for his specific building, the proposed changes would impact all FBSE zone properties and not just the specific property. And we did get some public comments that were submitted, speaking specifically about this property. So I just want to reiterate that this is a citywide proposal and make sure we keep that in mind. When analyzing the proposal, staff did considering the following, the first being compliance with master plan policies. The proposal affects the FBSE zone, which is primarily located within the Sugar House community area. There are several, several policy and goal statements in the Sugar House community plan that are supportive of the proposal. Additionally, the proposal is consistent with several initiatives included in Plan Salt Lake related to neighborhoods, beautiful city and economy. Applicable plans and policies are outlined in the staff report in attachment C. The master plans reiterate that the area is expected to be vibrant mixed-use pedestrian oriented area and active commercial uses in the FBSE zone provide eyes on the street and the streetcar corridor. The plans emphasize supporting small businesses and providing incentives for developers to accommodate these businesses into new projects. The second consideration is in regards to the conditional use process. The text amendment proposal was heard by the Sugar House land use committee and it was a very engaging and productive meeting. During that meeting, the Sugar House Community Council suggested that, residents at the meeting suggested that this process should be a conditional use for second story rooftop uses. And the community council chair also submitted a letter with that recommendation. Planning staff did carefully consider that suggestion and ultimately decided that we should not add the conditional use process for commercial uses above the second story. So we're not recommending adding that to this text amendment. And the reasons are because of the impacts that it has to other zones. A rooftop use is not currently defined in our table of permitted unconditional uses or in our definition section. Making second story commercial rooftop uses in this zone would require adding it to our land use, our land use tables and into the definition section of the zoning ordinance. Many of our zoning districts do not have that two-story commercial use limitation that this zone has. So the change would also require identifying whether a rooftop use is permitted or conditional in all of the zoning districts. Staff believes that these impacts go beyond the scope of this petition as it would impact all the land use table. The second consideration in related, in relation to the conditional use for second story rooftops relates to confusion when implementing the ordinance. Separating out the rooftop use above the second story as a conditional use solely on its own complicates the approval and permitting process when the use is otherwise permitted on the interior of the building and above the first story of the roof. As the commission knows, conditional use must be approved unless significant negative impacts cannot be mitigated. In looking at a restaurant use, for example, or another use that would otherwise be permitted on the interior and above the first story of the roof, staff believes that any of these impacts would be negligible when looking at these uses above the second story. And also certain uses within this zone still require a conditional use process. The city has adopted the table of permitted and conditional uses for form-based zones. And the permitted uses in the land use table are permitted use, are anticipated uses that are compatible with the zoning district. There are specific uses that are identified to require a conditional use process to look at potential impacts and compatibility with adjacent land uses and surrounding neighborhoods. Examples of permitted uses in this zone are restaurant, office and retail and art gallery. Examples of conditional uses are mostly alcohol related uses. Those are bar establishments, taverns. And so those types of uses that require conditional use, the rooftop activity would be analyzed and addressed for impacts as part of that conditional use process. The third consideration was the impacts of the proposal. Under the current FBSE zone, commercial use is permitted or conditional depending on the use above the first story. So the current regulations only limit commercial uses above the second story. So that's what this text amendment is specific to is those second story rooftop uses. If someone wants to build a one-story restaurant with rooftop dining in the FBSE zone, that is currently permitted. So staff is of the opinion that the proposed amendment for rooftop uses above the second story does not have more of an impact than a commercial use above the first story on the rooftop. In fact, it may be less impactful on the second story. And also the FBSE zone has some built-in setbacks for commercial uses when they're adjacent to residential properties. The requirement in this zone is 25% of the lot depth, up to a maximum of 25 feet. And staffs of the opinion these existing setback requirements are sufficient in terms of buffering commercial uses when they are adjacent to residential zoning. And finally, another suggestion that was made at the community council meeting related to, was related to height exceptions. And they believe that we should have, that we should add in a height exception for rooftop amenities and structures such as pergolas, sound walls and elevator stair bulkheads. These types of structures are included in the overall height measurement for building height. The applicant's proposal maintains that existing commercial building height requirement of 30 feet. Staffs of the opinion that even a two-story building with some of these mentioned rooftops, amenities and structures will likely be under the 30-foot requirement. And so this exception for the height wouldn't be necessary. The following is a list of the public process related to this project. Sent out the notice to the recognized organizations for this area, which is Sugar House as well as Liberty Wells. Early notification was sent out to property owners and residents within 300 feet of FBSE zone properties. The community council held a meeting, the Sugar House land use meeting. There was an open house held for the item, public hearing notice and public comments. Staff did receive seven public comments on the proposal, four in opposition and three in favor. We also received additional public comments from someone who had already submitted comments in opposition after the staff report was published and those comments were added into your Dropbox, I believe, yesterday. And staff has reviews, reviewed the standards for zoning text amendments related to this proposal. And again, we are recommending to forward a positive recommendation to the city council. That's all I have for my presentation. I can take questions or, um, the applicant Bill Grodnick or Paxton Geiman are both on the line.
Okay. First off, commissioners, any questions for staff?
I have a question for you, Amy. I don't fully understand the 30-foot height requirement or use for a rooftop use. So does that have to be below 30 feet? So if you have a building that's two stories, but it's 30 feet, you couldn't have a rooftop use?
So the 30-foot height requirement is something that currently exists in the zoning ordinance and they're proposing to keep that in. The way building height is measured, so if they have like a railing around the top of the building, that's included in the overall height. Something like an elevator would be included in the overall height. So it can be up to 30.
So if you have a two-story building and physical structure is at 30 feet, does this mean you can then not have a rooftop use? Because that would be above, 30 feet would be on top?
If they were to have structures above that 30-foot height limitation, so let's say the roof of the building itself is 30 feet and then they wanted to add a railing on top of that, that was like eight feet tall or something, that wouldn't be permitted above the 30 feet. So the way height is measured is to the top of those structures on the roof. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I just think the language, it's not super clear what that 30-foot height requirement. That's my only comment. Okay, thank you.
I agree with Adrian on that language. I had some questions on that as well. I think that might've been a little bit explained, a little bit clearer above 30. So Amy, I have a question though on, on the permitted uses. Why when, because this FBSE zone for this area is not that old. I can't remember the exact year it went, but it's been pretty recent. Why was rooftop uses not included in that permitted land use table for this zone? Is there a reason?
I don't know the reason. We don't, I, I mean, I didn't work on that zone. Nick may have some.
I realize as I said, it's.
But as I mentioned in the presentation, we don't have rooftop uses as a permitted or conditional use in any of our zones. So that could be why we didn't add it to the land use table at that point, but Nick may have some more information on that.
Yeah. So that, that restriction was placed based on public input at the council level when that zone was proposed. It was a very specifically discussed item about rooftop use at the time.
And so what, what has changed from then to now that it should be a permitted use? I mean, this will go to the council as well. So what's changed? What went, changed direction?
Well, I think, I think it's important to note that when that proposal, when that, when this zone was being drafted, it did not originally include that, that prohibition. So that is something that we've actually had a number of inquiries about, not just in this zone, but other zones. And there seems to be a growing preference for, or desire for patrons of businesses to have outdoor seating on roofs. So we've, we're seeing it more and more. And so I think that, I think the, the, just in some regards, the public is, is asking for more of these types of uses. And so, you know, this applicant proposed a text change so that they could deal with it on their property and in their zone. I would imagine that sooner or later we'll be addressing it on a more comprehensive, but there's nothing that has been started in terms of that.
So then that brings up then a follow-up question for me. If one of the reasons we're not, and, you know, we're taking it in this form is because we don't want the added impacts of adding it to the land use tables for all zones, but you foresee we're going to be doing that anyway. Is that a reasonable reason? I guess, if, if we're going to be doing it anyway, why can't we just do it now and tackle everything in the land use table? And to make it a additional use versus waiting for the inevitability of doing that in the future?
Well, the, because one, this is a private application and this is what they're proposing. So we generally will respond to what they are proposing. And even the city doesn't really have the right to expand a private application to include other things. And so, one, we need to respond to that application. Two, we don't know when we're going to get to it, how big of a priority it is to change or to address rooftop use. So it's probably a lot more complicated than I think people think just because of how building heights are measured in different areas and what types of exceptions and, and height encroachments that we, that would be allowed. And there may not be a need for it to be a conditional use everywhere. It's not impactful in many zones at all. And so I think that's, that's part of, part of the reason why it's important to consider this application has proposed on its own, own merits and not hold it accountable for something that the city may or may not do in the future.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Amy from the commissioners? All right, we will move on to the applicant, Bill Grodnick and Paxton Geiman. You, do you have a presentation? You need presenters?
Yes, if you would. This is Paxton Geiman. The property owner, Bill Grodnick, is on the line as well. He may chime in, but he's asked me to take the lead on presenting a few points.
Do you need presenter rights, Mr. Geiman, or?
You know.
Or just you want to speak?
I'm going to speak, but if Amy could pull up a photo of this particular building, then I don't need presentation rights.
Okay.
Yeah, I can do that.
Before I start your timer, we'll agree on what photo she brings up for you. So you're good with it. And Mr. Grodnick, you can pipe in at any time, but collectively both of you will have up to 10 minutes. And once we get the, the photo up that you like, I will start your timer. And, but we'll wait for that.
Okay, great. And Amy, just as a heads up before the timer starts, after this photo, I'm going to ask you to go to attachment A of the staff report. Just for our cue here. Okay, are we ready?
Okay, the time is yours. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. First, I want to express our gratitude to the staff for all the time and effort they put into this application. I served on the planning commission in my city for seven years and I have never seen such a thorough, comprehensive process that's been followed. So I applaud Amy and the staff for what they've done on this. We're really here for a fairly simple application and, and there's been a lot said about it, but it really boils down to this. Right now, under this zone, you can have a rooftop use on a single story building as long as the rooftop use doesn't exceed 30 feet. And all that we're asking is for the text to be amended to allow for rooftop uses on second stories as long as we still meet the 30-foot height restriction. So the 30-foot height restriction is already in place and will continue to be in place. We're simply saying, hey, if it's allowed on one story rooftop use, why not two as well? And, and that's really the, the long and short of it. Now there's, there's more that I'd like to explain. This particular building, if you look at it, this building was renovated extensively in 2018. It was designed, engineered and constructed with permits to allow for rooftop use as far as the building. It was designed, engineered and constructed with permits to allow for rooftop use as far as the building code goes. It's got two different stairway ingress and egress to the roof. It's engineered to support rooftop uses. The building faces 900 East, as you can see. And if you look at the building and the rooftop itself, you'll notice that it already has built in a sound barrier wall on the back part of the roof. If you can see that, that will allow for more of a private ambiance for rooftop dining. It will block noise, facilitate the blockage of noise for residences in the back. But when you look at this building on its own, it is ready for use and occupancy. The problem is my client, the owner of the property, is not meeting with the success he would like in terms of finding the restaurant user. He does have a restaurant user lined up who will take occupancy if we can get rooftop uses approved. It's going to be a wonderful, high quality restaurant, Mexican restaurant dining experience with the rooftop view. So sort of imagine yourself sitting up there on a fall evening, enjoying the great outdoors while dining in the setting. And I think you'll see why it is becoming more popular, as one of the staff members, Mr. Norris indicated. Something else I want to point out, there's been a lot of concern raised that if you adopt this proposed text amendment, of course it applies to any property within the FBSE zone. We, we understand that it's not just applicable to the one property that would apply to any properties within this zone. Amy, if you'll turn to attachment A, the zoning map. This is a map showing the location of all the properties with this current zoning. Now, the significance of this map is that the property owner, my client, went to the effort, let's see, go to, there we go, that map. So those properties in purple are the properties that currently have this zoning in, in the city. My client went to the effort of driving every one of these properties to see what existed. And we can represent to you with accuracy that there are only three two-story buildings that exist today in this zone. And of those three buildings, none of them appear to qualify or be adaptable to a rooftop use. So no, I understand that we're just talking about existing buildings and something could always be built in the future. But as it stands right now, we're not opening up Pandora's box and that's the point I want to make. If this text amendment is approved, yes, you will see rooftop dining on my client's property on 9th East, 2166 South. But we don't see another property that exists today that's a two-story building that would actually qualify or be adapted to a rooftop restaurant use. So I don't want there to be concern that somehow by approving this, we're going to see a flood of applications for rooftop uses. That's just not, it's, it's not in the cards. There's not that many properties that would qualify. Again, you ask yourself, well, what, what's the impact? And I think it's important to point out that when you're considering text amendments, one of the guides you refer to for decisions like this are the master plans. And here the master plans talk about supporting small businesses and providing incentives for developers to accommodate businesses into new projects. In other words, it's intended as a zone that allows for revitalization. And here, that's precisely what's occurred. My client has incurred nearly $2 million in revitalizing and rehabilitating this property. And the restaurant use on the rooftop is something that would add to the desirability of this location for restaurant operators. It's also worth pointing out that right now, if a, if a rooftop use is allowed on a single story, what is the additional impact? What is the harm of allowing rooftop uses on the second story? There's really not a change in impact. In fact, as, as Amy's staff report points out, the impact may even be less being on a second story instead of a first story. I guess the other point that I would make is that the staff has gone to great lengths in analyzing this and has come up with a positive recommendation. And I, I think that speaks volumes. They've gone to great efforts to analyze what should be done here. And, you know, from our perspective, we don't really care whether it's a conditional use or permitted use. And we understand Amy and the staff's reasoning for why they don't want to go with the conditional use approach. We simply want it to be available under the code. And for that reason, we respectfully request your support and ask you to forward a positive recommendation to the city council to approve this text amendment. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Let's see, ma'am, I think you need to unmute. I can't hear you.
I do, thank you. Um, Mr. Grodnik, did you want to pipe in? Are you good? Okay. All right, thank you for that presentation, Mr. Guyman. As commissioners, any questions for the applicant at this time? Okay, hearing none, if you will just stand by, Mr. Grodnik and Mr. Paxton, or Mr. Guyman will come back to you after the public hearing portion. I'm going to open the public hearing and Nick, do we, is Judy here?
She is, Judy, you are unmuted.
We will start with the community council representative and always good to see your face or to hear your voice, Judy. Go ahead.
Thanks, Amy. Judy Short's always here. I think in general, we're in favor of this. Amy's gone over, you know, the public process that we went through. So we had it in the newsletter, we had it at the land use meeting and we've received a number of comments. And I don't think that the neighborhood as a whole is against it. But I think there's some specifics that bother us. I agree with you that the way this description of what does 30 feet tall mean is pretty convoluted. And that's part of my questions in here, it just didn't make sense to me. I think I understand it now. Another issue that we hear, and you know this well, is that sound is a big deal. And it's all relative, just like that tall fence you've talked about a minute ago. It's where it's located and what's in proximity to it, whether you can hear the sound. And Salt Lake County does a poor job of enforcing, if they do any enforcing. So I worry about that. And I think maybe a condition ought to be that there have to be sound barriers of some sort. And I don't know what those would be. Maybe if you're having a railing, you have to have a sound barrier up to the top of the railing or something. But I think that could be a big problem. One of my biggest problems is that I'm not sure that the average person who owns a single family house near these parcels is really on, on the radar of zoning changes that are made that could affect them. So for example, if you look at the map, lots of those parcels are up against RMF 5,000 and RMF, or I'm sorry, residential 5,000 and residential 7,000. So there are a number of single family homes that abut all these potential lots. And I agree with Mr. Guyman that, you know, right now there's only three. But if this catches on, there could be 15 in a couple of years. So I think, I don't know. This is why we're recommending a conditional use so that the parcels and the properties directly abutting these can review each individual one. Because if you buy your house today and maybe you're, does your realtor tell you these are the implications of the zone in the lot next to you? I don't think they do. And I'm not sure the average buyer investigates all that, especially not in the market we have today where you got to be on the spot in five minutes. So I just think a conditional use is more appropriate. And I'm sorry that it may cause the staff extra time, but I think we'll have a better result as a result. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Judy. Just to clarify for anyone who is in attendance that wishes to speak in the bottom right, please click the hand that will raise your hand, let us know you do wish to speak. This particular petition is something that the planning commission will be forwarding a recommendation on to the city council who will be ultimately making the decision. So Nick, it looks like we have at least one hand raised that I see for Sarah Woolsey.
Yeah, we also have a call in user who's indicated they want to speak. And so I'm, it's, this is George Chapman, I'm going to unmute you, George.
Okay.
George, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, if you, George, just state your name for the record officially and then you will have two minutes.
Right, my name is George Chapman, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'm against this proposal because parking requirements are not enough to mitigate the significant negative impacts on adjacent businesses and residents of the popularity of rooftop bars. Rooftop bars are a great idea, but this is a new added use needing more parking, much more parking really. But parking was already set before this was proposed. And this is not really going, it says that rooftop first floor is okay, but this is a third floor. And this is way up higher. It, it's not, there's not a little difference. There's a big difference going from first floor to third floor. And that affects adjacent of residents, homeowners, and that's a big deal. Also, the developer was told that operation was not allowed, but he built it anyway without showing the rooftop structures on the approved design that we reviewed. That, in my opinion, looked like he was thinking if he built it, they can't stop him. That, in my opinion, is disrespectful. The other reason is the city gave him two plus feet of sidewalk and now he wants more? A wider sidewalk would have made a more walkable street. And finally, since the form-based zones can be used almost anywhere, there's a 15 minute bus within four blocks. This does affect the whole city. The planning commission a couple of times in past year has approved form-based zones far away from rail. So essentially this can open the floodgates to hundreds of more requests. Again, the biggest reason to deny this is the parking was already set before this new added proposed use. And finally, I'd like to add that the planning staff for many, many meetings has been very responsive and professional in answering questions, very complicated questions from many concerned citizens. In other words, I love my public servants. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, George. Okay, and just to reiterate, if you wish to email comments, you can do that right now at planning comments at slc gov.com. They're being monitored as we speak. Moving on, Nick, to the next person.
Next up is Sarah Woolsey. Sarah, you are unmuted.
All right, thank you, Madam Vice Chair and to everybody serving tonight in this meeting. I'm a resident of the Sugar House area. I live on Hollywood Avenue, about a block from 21st South. So the form-based code is not right in my area, but I do am over, over 300 feet from an indoor property that has caused my neighborhood significant sound concerns for 20 years. There's a dance club on 21st South. And given the sensitivity we've had to significant sound concerns for over 20 years from that business, I'd just like to speak out for anyone near these form-based code areas and the concern for carrying sound. I, I agree with the concern that this would open up this code to, this type of code to allow rooftop, I'm going to say restaurants, but the worry would be bars that are open late, bars that have more sound, bars that have music, because those significantly impact quiet residential streets. I was not at the Sugar House Council and did not hear the proposal for the conditional use. But after hearing it tonight, it feels like that might make more sense to have those decisions made on a conditional basis with the input of the neighbors versus the, the form-based code. So again, my concern is in general, Sugar House development is impacting residents significantly. This is another opportunity to impact residential streets in a large scale way without really assessing that impact. And so I would encourage the planning commission to carefully consider a wide opening, the form-based code for this, and really consider the neighborhood. Again, also consider voting against it because it will impact the quality of life for the neighbors. As Judy Short described, Salt Lake County does not deal with sound issues. So once this is there, whatever concerns we have, we will have, no longer be able to mitigate. And so as a citizen, I'm very concerned about the quality of life and I appreciate you taking my comments.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, Nick, any other, I do not see any other hands, do you?
I do not. John, have we had any recent emails on this?
No, we just had the one from George Chapman, so.
Madam Chair, I, I noticed that my client, Bill Grodnik, the property owner, was hoping to say something too, if he could be unmuted.
Oh, thank you.
Bill actually has the ability to unmute himself. However, Madam Chair, normally we will close the public hearing and then give the applicant and the applicant's team a
Yeah.
opportunity to respond to comments or.
We're going to give it like 30 seconds so another hand doesn't pop up and, and, and bite me again. At that time, I will bring it back to the applicant and you can respond to any of the comments you heard. And Mr. Grodnik can also speak at that time. Hey, Nick, Sarah, if you would unclick your hand and let us know that you've already spoken, that'll take you off the list. Thank you. All right, seeing no other hands up for, we will close the public hearing and bring it back. Right now, I will allow the applicant time to address any of the comments that were raised. So, and Mr. Grodnik, you can unmute yourself because you are on the panelist's list.
Okay.
I just, all I wanted to add was that the only outdoor dining my building would have would be the, this rooftop deck. And this how critical, even with or without COVID in our midst, how important outdoor dining is. People have gotten very comfortable with it, very used to it. They search out the restaurants that have the outdoor dining. And we think it would be a great amenity for the Sugar House area to be able to have outdoor dining at the, the restaurant that wants to go in there.
Okay. Mr. Guyman, would you like to take the opportunity to address any of the concerns brought up?
No, I mean, the comment was made that this would be a rooftop bar. It's, it's not a bar. It, it's just an extension of outdoor seating for the restaurant. But other than that, I think you've been fully apprised of the issues. Again, we want to bring this to the city council, hopefully with a positive recommendation. Thank you for your efforts.
All right, commissioners, we'll bring it to you at this time. If you have any further questions, comments or discussion for staff and/or the applicant, go ahead now.
I have a question for Mr. Guyman, actually. Mr. Guyman, how would you address the, the comments about the noise and the potential of neighbors being adversely affected by the noise? Do you expect that this restaurant and/or, I don't know, amenity that you'll have up there or allow up there will have, you know, high levels of noise? How would you address those concerns?
Thank you for your question. There's really a couple of points to be made. First is that this is not something that would be in use 365 days a year, right? I mean, this is somewhat seasonal because it depends on the weather. So you're certainly going to have weather conditions that would not allow for outdoor rooftop dining at least a fair part of the year. But then secondly, we still have to comply with the city's ordinances regarding noise. And when outdoor activities need to, need to be shut down, I don't remember in Salt Lake City if that's 10 PM or 11 PM, but the restaurant operations will still have to comply with those ordinances. So yes, it will be an outdoor dining experience, but when you look at this particular property where there's that, that barrier wall at the back of it that sits about six feet high, that'll certainly serve to, to mute some of the noise. There's no question that there's some noise with rooftop dining. Now, this is a, it's not a concert, there's not loud noise, it's not a dance hall or a club. It's, it's a restaurant use and, you know, people will have to comply, they, they can't be nuisances. And, you know, I think when you, when you step back and you say, well, how much noise is that really going to add? It's certainly not going to add much during the hours of operation.
Any other questions from commissioners?
I have a couple of comments.
Go ahead.
So I think the language is confusing because it's, it's referring to a 30 foot height requirement when really that's the limitation. So it's, it, it creates a little bit of ambiguity. I'm not going to take too much mind to that if, if the intent is clear. But in my view, if the ordinance isn't going to include other requirements on outdoor uses such as hours of operation or sound buffering requirements when adjacent to a residential property, I think it should be a conditional use. I mean, we look at sidewalk dining as a conditional use. That has to go through us, and we hear comments and concerns from neighboring property owners of the impacts. So to me, it just seems, I don't know why we would treat outdoor dining that's, you know, two stories up any differently, but that's my position.
I think Nick was first, and then we'll go to Andreas.
So, outdoor dining at grade level is not a conditional use. It's a special exception in, I think, four or five zones. Otherwise, it's allowed in any required yard in most zoning districts that also allow restaurants and cafes. So the zoning districts where it requires a special exception, it's only if that is in a required yard. So for example, a CN zone has a required side yard of 10 feet. So if someone proposes outdoor dining in that side yard, then they would have to get a special exception for that. If it's in the buildable area of the lot, it is permitted or allowed the exact same way as the principal use is in the zone. So if a restaurant's already a permitted use, outdoor dining in the buildable area, meaning outside the required setbacks, is allowed.
Thanks for that clarification.
Okay, Andreas, you got a question, comment?
Well, just a general comment and my thoughts. I do, I do agree with what Judy mentioned. I mean, it would make a lot more sense to to view it as a single project rather than, you know, kind of more of a blanket type of an approval. I mean, there's nothing particularly that I view as being negative in this particular project. However, you know, like she was saying, when somebody buys a house, for example, they're not privy to the information of what is allowed, not allowed to be built, you know, across the street or next to, you know, somebody buying a new house in the area. So I do, you know, have, I do offer credibility to Judy's comments, I think, in this particular case.
Thanks, Andreas. Carolyn, you have your hand up.
That's a mistake. Sorry.
Okay. You didn't want to say anything. All right, anything else from Commissioners?
Yeah, I've got a comment. I, with all due respect, I disagree with Andreas. I think, and even Judy, which surprises me because I'm usually right on board with what Judy has to say. But I think people buy houses all the time without knowing the exact uses that certain properties in certain zones have that might butt up against them. If they do their research, they can go find that out. But I don't think we should be making decisions based on somebody who might buy a house sometime in the future. I like the idea of rooftop dining. I think this is a chance for us to not even encourage it, but allow it in certain areas. And, you know, I'm not sure how everyone's feeling, but I think this, I'm in support of sending a positive recommendation, and I'd like to know where everyone else is on that. Or, you know, a couple of you, because if there are other concerns that I'm not thinking of, I'd like to know it.
I'll jump in. I would agree. I think, you know, we're all pushing density in our cities and pushing for height and all these things, and this is a byproduct of that. We take away open space on the ground floor, and this is essentially open space, just a little bit taller. So I think these are great uses for a rooftop that otherwise would just be creating a heat island and absorbing, you know. So this is basically just a raised ground level, and I think it's a great opportunity for us to add more amenities to our city by taking advantage of that.
Thank you, John. Anybody else?
So Sarah and John, are you, you're in favor of it as drafted as a permitted use, or do you see any benefit in having it as a conditional use?
I'm in favor of a permitted use. That's my preference here.
Yeah, I would agree. I think I do have a similar concern with the bars. I had an office next to a bar, and that does start to get pretty loud if there's no reasonable control over the sound system. But I think in general, it's an amenity to the city, and I think we should start thinking about the future of the city and start allowing things like this to happen.
The benefit, I mean, with bars, that would be a conditional use anyway. So if they were going to have a rooftop component, that would have to be part of their conditional use application. And it could be at that time, as I understand it. You can always correct me, but.
That's what I was going to say as well, Adrian. Amy Thompson, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but perhaps the potential businesses that most residents would be having an impact with would be bars. What about dance? Well, you wouldn't do that on the roof. But I guess if you were drunk enough, you might. But bars and taverns, those are already conditional uses no matter what. Regardless if the rooftop amenity is permitted, that particular business type would still entail a conditional use, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So any rooftop component associated with those uses, whether it's on the first story or above the second story, if this text amendment is passed, would go through that conditional use process, and those impacts would be looked at.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Is anyone ready to make a motion? Of any kind?
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Thank you, Adrian.
It's on the analysis and findings listed in the staff report, testimony, and the proposal presented. I move that the Planning Commission forward a positive recommendation to the City Council regarding the proposed amendments to Section 21A that 27.040D FB-SE Building Form Standards related to commercial uses above the second story. The Commission finds that the proposed amendments comply with the review standards as demonstrated in attachment D of the staff report.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion from Adrian and a second from Maureen. Any discussion to that motion? Okay, let's take a vote. John?
Yes.
Adrian?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Agree.
Andreas?
I will vote no.
What was that?
I will vote no.
Okay. You kind of cut out, so I wanted to make sure.
Yes.
And Maureen?
Yes.
Okay, that is five in favor and one against. The motion passes to send a positive recommendation to the City Council. Congratulations, Mr. Grodnick. And as a, this is my neighborhood, I will just thank you for not bringing in another pizza joint. That's my vote. Other than that, you're off to the City Council. Thank you both.
Thanks to all of you.
All right, moving on to the next agenda item. Are all of the Commissioners good, or do you need a break? I saw a thumbs up. We're going to forge ahead. This is the zoning, the 2200 West Zoning Map Amendment, PLN PCM 2021-00575. And the planner is Chrissy Gilmore.
Hi, good evening. So sorry to keep repeating this. Nick, can I get the presenter capacity?
There we go.
Okay. So this is a request to amend the zoning map of the subject property located at 2060 North, 2200 West, from AG2 Agricultural to M1 Light Manufacturing Zoning District. The property owner is seeking to amend the subject property to accommodate future development. That's the state of reason. No specific site development proposal has been submitted at this time. The subject property is approximately 0.64 acres in size and a BUDS M1 zoning on all sides. It is just west of I-215 and north of the airport near the city limits. And then it has Business Park across the street and adjacent to the, or not quite adjacent, but to the north. It is also within the inland port overlay boundary, and it is just on that northern boundary, so the very top of the inland port overlay. So as far as considerations and staff analysis, the North Point Small Area Plan was adopted and was reviewed, and that plan was adopted in 2000 and includes the subject property. The plan shows the future land use of this area as Business Park, which was consistent with the zoning put in place during the citywide zoning amendment in 1995. While the Northwest, the North Point Small Area Plan identifies the area as Business Park, it also states that the Business Park Zone should be amended to allow retail service-type businesses that would support the employee base in the area. So while not strictly in line with the master plan, the master plan does recognize the future need for retail and business that wouldn't necessarily be accomplished under the Business Park Zone. So staff felt that generally the proposal meets the intention of the master plan recommendations. Of note, the city recently started the process of updating the North Point Small Area Plan. While the recommendations in the new plan may change, staff was bound to continue processing this application because it is a private initiated application. As far as the inland port regulations, though the property is zoned to AG2, since it is within the overlay zone, they could already do uses that are allowed in the M1 zone. It is just that any use in the M1 zone not allowed in AG2 would need to go through a conditional use process. So as far as impact, the change in zoning would have little impact since the M1 zone uses could already be accommodated under the current zoning. It is just a matter of what process they would go through. And then as far as compatibility with adjacent properties, the properties immediately surrounding the subject property were recently rezoned from agriculture or AG2 to M1. So it should be fairly compatible, given that the subject, the properties surrounding the subject property are of this, would be of the same zone. So as far as public input, staff received a letter from the West Point Community Council. This letter was emailed to the Commission and is in your drop box. The council is against the proposal for a few reasons, primarily due to the new update of the master plan and that the consideration of the reason should be delayed until that plan is complete, as well as concerns with the potential loss of mature trees on site. But I believe the community council will be on the phone to answer any questions, though. So in summary, the proposed map amendment meets the adopted standards in 21A 5050, and therefore, staff is recommending the Planning Commission forward a positive recommendation to the City Council. And that concludes my presentation. The applicant is also on the line.
Okay, Chrissy, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for staff? All right, we'll move on. I believe Nick Smith is on the line. Yes?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Mr. Smith, do you have a presentation you need presenter rights for?
No, I do not.
Okay, then you will have up to 10 minutes. Feel free not to take that whole time, but it's up to you. Time is yours.
Perfect. I will make it short. We did recently, we own the property that is the U shape around the proposed property that we're looking to have the rezon done on. That was just recently approved by City Council, I think earlier this year, I think in March or so, for M1 zoning. So it took us a little while to purchase the property from the homeowner that we purchased it from. But after, we were able to get that accomplished. We're just trying to keep consistency and conformity with the other adjacent uses in the area. We don't have really any intent of a specific use currently of what we're going to do. But with the gentleman to the back, Kevin Cazoldi, and also the gentleman also to the south, who has also just recently built a few other buildings in the M1 zone, we'd like to hope that you guys would push forward with a positive recommendation to the City Council on this as well. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Mr. Smith, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Okay, with that, we will move on to the public hearing portion, and afterward, Mr. Smith will give you the opportunity to respond to anything that may come up. Nick, so we have someone here from the community council.
Well, I'm not sure, but I'm going to unmute Lynn Skidmore and just ask Lynn, do you want to speak on this item, Lynn?
Am I muted? Can't hear me?
We can.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure that Dorothy Owens' letter was considered by everyone with the accompanying photos of the trees in the area.
Would you state your name for the record?
My name is Lynn Skidmore. I'm on the board of the West Point Community Council, standing for Dorothy at this time.
Okay. We did get the Dropbox, that letter and attachments in our Dropbox, so we have had access to it. Did you have any other comments you wanted to give us tonight?
No, no, I do not.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Skidmore. There's anyone else in attendance? Trying to look at the attendee list.
Judy Short and then Clark Cahoon, who's with the city and here on the last item.
Okay. Any comments that were emailed in, John?
None that we received.
Okay. Going to give it a little, few seconds. All right, seeing that there are no other public comments, we'll go ahead and close that portion, that public comment portion, and bring it back. So Commissioners, do you have any, I guess, the comments we received from the West Point Community Council, Mr. Smith, were in regards to losing the trees and the mayor's initiative to, you know, be planting a lot of trees. Did you want to take a moment to give comments to that?
Really, I, I mean, we plan on trying to keep what we can and see what will accommodate with the surroundings. I mean, most of the stuff is on the perimeter, but I think it will end up determining, based upon what we actually make a decision on building there. And so we're, you know, we may or may not be able to keep some of those as well.
I'd like to give you the opportunity to respond. Staff, Chrissy, so in an M1 zone, what is the urban, does the urban forestry have a requirement for projects that come in M1 zones like they do in other zoning areas?
Yeah, and I don't believe that there is a street tree requirement in the M1 zone. Nick, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't, I don't believe that's there. Otherwise, they would just meet the general landscaping standards, like 30% live plant material.
Yeah, so there is the street tree requirement along all public streets, but there's also the tree protection ordinance, which basically says that as part of any sort of development proposal, an applicant has to basically get approval to remove what's defined in our code as a specimen tree, meaning it's a tree of significant value even on private property. And the approval, the demo, the removal of those trees is subject to urban forestry approval, even on private property. So that would be something that would be addressed at time of development application.
Commissioners, any questions, comments, discussion?
I'll make the motion. I remember doing the M1s for the other properties on this corner, and it seems like it would be consistent to allow this one to be M1 also. So based on the information in the staff report and information presented, the input received during the public hearing, I move the Planning Commission So based on the information, the staff report and information presented, the input received during the public hearing, I moved the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council to approve PLN PCM twenty twenty one dash oh oh five seven five.
Have a second.
Second.
Was that Adrian?
Yes.
All right, I have a motion from Maureen and a second from Adrian. Any discussions to that? Okay, let's take our votes. Carolyn. Okay, I saw ahead and I read your lips, agreed. Sarah?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Andreas?
I'll vote yes.
Adrian?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Smith here. On to the next step. Okay, moving on to the last item on our agenda, that is the wrong envelope open. This is a zoning text amendment for tech, Lake City land use changes. PLN PCM twenty twenty one dash zero zero five one one. And Nick, you are presenting.
I am, thank you. So this is a proposal initiated by Mayor Aaron Mendenhall to update the zoning code to address tech-related land uses in the city. This is one of the mayor's goals for twenty twenty one, and it's also has outlined in the staff report helps implement and achieve goals in Plant Salt Lake and in numerous community plans that are outlined in the staff report. The commission's role on this is to make a recommendation to the city council. Staff is recommending that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation. I'll go over some of the the proposal really quickly, but first to cover some of the factors that are that the planning commission considers for text amendments is the level of consistency with city goals, whether it furthers the purposes of the zoning code, if it's consistent with the purposes of applicable overlay zoning districts, and if it implements best practices in urban planning and design. So each of these factors is discussed in the staff report, and generally, the planning staff is of the opinion that all of the factors support this proposal. So the proposed changes will add a number of uses. The first is a biomedical use. And the definitions in the staff report, but basically these are facilities and types of uses that perform research and development in the field of medicine and produce biological biomedical or pharmaceutical products. This particular use as proposed does have a special provision that prohibits the use within a half mile of a residential use if the facility produces hazardous waste. So we know that some biomedical facilities that produce things used in particularly in nuclear medicine produce some radioactive waste, much like hospitals that have nuclear medicine clinics and things like that do. And so this is a way to help ensure that those facilities, because they tend to produce slightly larger amounts or larger amounts than a hospital might, are further away from residential uses and in our more industrial areas west of two fifteen. One of the requests that we received since the staff report was published from our sustainability department was that these facilities should be required to obtain an exemption from the Utah Department of, I should say, environmental quality with the air quality division, if they're not producing below or above the amount of building emissions that would otherwise trigger some special permit and remediation. This allows us to track the the uses so that we know what the impact is. We know that all land uses produce some emissions. And the Department of Air Quality has established thresholds for what's acceptable without having to take mitigation measures. And so this would help us ensure that that's occurring when people submit building permits to build facilities or business licenses to occupy existing places or make changes to existing buildings. Like I said, this, this re request from sustainability, it is consistent with Plant Salt Lake goals related to air quality, and it's also consistent with an executive order issued by Mayor. Sorry, I'm talking too fast. Mayor Mendenhall, that we consider air quality and air quality impacts in all decision making. And this map shows where in the city these uses would be allowed. It does not take into account the half mile buffer. So basically, that orange line, right, that goes right down the middle of the map is two fifteen. And it's safe to assume that everything on the right hand side of that map, a biomedical facility that produces radioactive or other harmful materials wouldn't be allowed. Whereas on the left side, they would probably end up having to be slightly further even west than two fifteen because there are residential uses near there. The next use that is proposed to be added is what's called the technology facility, and these are the definition speaks for itself. These are basically places that do research, produce, store, manufacture, process data and other technology types of things. There's no special provisions proposed with this. Showing shows all the areas in purple where these things are allowed. As we've done our research on this, we looked at other cities that have similar definitions and similar facilities. And from what we can find, that these uses operate very similar to office buildings in terms of impacts. With one exception that we'll get to later in this, and those are data centers, but like I said, we've separated that out as a use, so it's not included in the definition of a technology facility. The third use is kind of related to the biomedical use, and we wanted to make sure that these were not confused. And the other thing that we've that we noticed in our code is that medical lab was listed in four or five different ways in our code. Sometimes it was a medical lab, sometimes it was medical dental and optical, sometimes it was just medical and optical, sometimes just dental. And so we combined all those to avoid the confusion. And and not only were they different uses, they were also in different zones. And so we combined those into one use to make it easier and reduce the need to make interpretations and address conflicts in the code. One of the public comments that we heard about this particular use, the original definition, which is in our current definition, includes the manufacturing of medical devices. We removed that. So this is a true lab. And because it's integrated more into our neighborhoods and community, we didn't want, and we did get some indication that there is at least one medical lab that's producing things that has turned into more manufacturing than actual lab work. And so we wanted to make sure that we're addressing that. We did get some comment that these shouldn't be allowed in institutional zones. So if you look on the map, a lot of those orange dots that are in the middle of that yellowish color, the yellowish colors tend to be our residential neighborhoods. Those are institutional zones for the most part. And the reason why we added these into this zone is because of the other uses that are already allowed in those zones, offices, medical research, hospitals, medical, again, medical clinics are allowed. So some very similar uses that produce very similar impacts. And so that's why that was proposed to be added. The fourth use is an existing use in our code also, and it's being updated a little bit. The research and development facility. And these are places that basically test materials and products. So when you get a phone and it's tested by UL Labs or something like that, where they figure out at what height can it be dropped and not break? That's what these places are. But there are also places like we have a facility down in the Gateway Recursion Medical that does a lot of, a lot of research. That's currently how this is classified. It's pretty limited in where in the city it can go. And so this merges a couple of similar definitions. It updates that definition and then expands where in the city it can go. Again, these uses are also very similar to offices and other types of uses that are already allowed in some of these zones in the city. And one of the things that I wanted to touch on with all of these uses is that you'll notice that all of them are allowed in the industrial area. And one of the things that we're trying to do is expand the types of uses that can go in the industrial areas. We recognize that we are seeing a very large amount of logistics types of uses, warehousing, et cetera. And we understand the impact that that has on our air quality. And so we want to expand the types of uses that can help fill up some of those spaces so that we have more diversity of uses in our industrial areas and manufacturing areas. So the last use that we added based on input in our research is a data center. And we broke this out from the technology facility because of how resource heavy they are. And I think in the staff report, we put a link to to an article that discusses a data center that's, I think it's in Arizona. But these are some of the largest water users that we have around. Fortunately, we don't have massive ones in Salt Lake City yet. But they're out there. We know we have them in the region, and they can use millions of gallons of water every single day. And so we wanted to break that out. And because of the nature of these uses, they tend to have very few employees for their size, and they tend to be in big warehouse-like buildings without any sort of street engagement. So they just don't work in places where we're trying to create walkability and and in more urban areas. So we're proposing that these only be allowed in the M one, M two, and BP zoning districts where these types of large buildings are already being constructed. And one thing to note that I believe this is going to be on your next agenda, but this, but the mayor has initiated a petition to limit the amount of water any single land use can 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 use. And so data centers are one of the reasons why. And so this will be subject to that when it goes through. It is currently, that petition is currently operating under what we call temporary land use regulations, meaning we are not processing any applications for any use that would exceed three hundred thousand gallons of water per day. We don't have a lot of uses right now in the city that do that, but we also don't want more. So we've invoked the temporary, the pending ordinance doctrine as that implies, and we're holding those applications, which means we have a hundred and eighty days from the time that was initiated to get something adopted. And so that hundred and eighty days, I think it ends end of December, early January. So we're going to get this to the planning commission in a few weeks and then on to the city council a few weeks after that. So they have several months to make decisions and to discuss it. This is super small on the presentation, but I wanted to have it just in case there's questions. This compares the four uses. It doesn't include the data centers. But this compares the four uses as to where they are going and where they would be. And the staff report outlines why the rationale behind making these permitted uses where we have proposed. Our recommendation, like I said, is that the city council adopt or make recommend the city council adopt the proposed amendments. And that we want to reiterate that the planning commission should consider that request from sustainability so to make biomedical uses submit proof of compliance or an exemption from the Utah Division of Air Quality. And that's it. You're muted, Amy.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Nick?
I have a question for Nick on the biomedical uses where you've got the prohibition within a half mile of residential uses if the facility produces hazardous or radioactive waste. So do you mean that the facility has to actually generate it? Or is it if they use any kind of hazardous waste, they would be prohibited from being located within a half mile of a residential use?
You know, that's a really good question. I think it's worded that if they produce any waste.
So if you have a lab where they use what would be defined as hazardous waste under the environmental quality rules, but they're not necessarily creating something out of it, they're using it as part of their lab testing processes, that wouldn't necessarily be excluded based on that, if if there were a residential use within a half mile. Is that how you interpret that?
Yeah, that is how we'd interpret that. However, if if they're doing some sort of testing, there's, there's always a byproduct. Right? And so it's not like that radioactive material, if that's what they're using in their testing gets absorbed, there's still something packaging whatever.
The radioactive waste I get, I think my concern is that the the restriction with hazardous waste, because that really encompasses so many inputs and biomedical uses that might be problematic for some and effectively limited within any of the zoning districts within a half mile of a residential use where it would otherwise be permitted. But that's my only comment.
Okay. Any other questions for Nick? Okay, I believe we have Clark Cahoon, who is the advisor for the tech. I can't remember your exact title. Going with the city, if you want to take a few minutes to give your comments to this petition.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, just focused on technology and innovation initiatives with the city. And I just wanted to throw my support behind the good work that Nick and his team has put together with updating these these different zoning changes that are being proposed. It's really important as the city grows and as we kind of step into the future that we, we don't work against ourselves as we're trying to find the the jobs of the future, a place to set up shop and and for our community to to be able to participate in the benefits of those. When it comes to healthcare innovation, there's some really unique components to that industry. It's the first time that a mayor has focused on one specific industry as an economic development cornerstone. And the reason why is because these jobs are sticky. They don't get up and leave very quickly or very easily because they're rooted in physical space, meaning lab space, research and development. They're high wage jobs. So these are jobs that will help pull people up that economic ladder as well for for more opportunity. And the other thing is we have a really solid pipeline coming from the University of Utah. We have this built in mechanism that feeds into this industry. And then also there's the public health benefit as well. As you have people focus on this industry, developing new technologies and products that go to market, they're more health conscious. And so the more that's out in the community, there's, there's a public benefit that comes along with it. So because of all these reasons and just knowing that you know, as as the city grows and as we mature, we've got to stay competitive, it's really important to look at these these types of changes. So thanks, Nick, for for doing the work on this. We fully support it. We appreciate this coming up to the planning committee and want to help in any way that we can to to move this forward, knowing that it's not only a mayor's priority, but also just a really healthy way to update the city and help us stay on top of things as things get more competitive and as we want to make sure that we're leading out, being the capital city. So thanks for your time, everyone.
Thanks, Clark. Okay, any other questions for Clark as city staff or Nick? All right, with that, we will open the public hearing, and I do show that we have Judy Short, who wishes to speak. Judy, Nick, I'm not sure you can mute her, and Judy, you're free to give your comments.
Judy, you are unmuted.
Thank you. I apologize that my letter was late and didn't make it in your packet. I hope you had time to read it. I have a couple of comments. The first one is, we don't know what the RP or BP zone is. Never heard of those. Maybe I haven't read the entire code recently. We appreciate the fact that manufacturing has been taken out of this definition. We had, we have an issue with a place that's in Sugar House, right in the middle of a bunch of houses. And we don't need to have that ability expand. One thing that struck me that wasn't in my letter is that a lot of these, as Nick called them, the small orange dots in the yellow, are schools and churches in the residential districts. are schools and churches in the residential districts, residential neighborhoods. And it strikes me that we have a terrible housing shortage. And I think we have plenty of place in the city for businesses to exist. And I'd like to propose that should the use be changed for a school or church or some institutional zone, that it revert back to a housing zone. And I'm not sure I care at this point what housing zone that might be, but that might be a way to free up a little more land for housing. So I put that to you tonight. Nick needs more to think about. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Judy. I agree. Nick always needs more to think about. Okay, well, I see no other actual attendees, so no other hands. John, did you receive any emails?
We did not receive any emails.
Okay. With that, I will close. I feel it's safe to close the public hearing and bring that back to Nick. Well, two questions, I guess, from Judy. You want to clarify what the RP and BP zoning is? And then your thoughts on taking out institutional zones?
Sure. So the RP zone is the research park zone. So it's only mapped up by the university. Ironically, the city doesn't have any zoning authority over Research Park. And so however, we chose, the city is also required to zone all the land in the city. So we had to zone it something, even though we don't regulate it, which is one of the funny things about state law. But anyway, so we, we chose to add these uses to Research Park in the event, in the future. And we don't know that this is going to happen, but if somehow there's a change in that, and the city does end up having some zoning authority that they're at it. And the BP zone is the business park zone. So it is not widely mapped. It basically, I think the easiest way to think of the BP zone is that it's, it's M1 light. It's really a manufacturing zone that doesn't quite allow as many of the uses that the M1 zone allows, but it also doesn't allow things like retail and restaurants and things like that. So it's, it's kind of a rough zone, but most of that BP zone, in fact, is mapped along 20 north, 2200 west in that North Point area that, that Chrissy actually was talking about in the previous application before you. And then it's scattered around OC Tanner on State Street is on BP. And there's a couple other places, some right where 300 west makes the bend into, it becomes Backstreet, and then a, a small couple of pieces elsewhere.
What are your thoughts on the institutional?
I, well, I know this is, that's a little bit separate from this proposal, the housing, but frankly, housing should be allowed in the institutional zone, and I think that's a different proposal that should be considered by the city. It's pretty hard to have a, some sort of a clause in a zoning code that when a use goes away, that it reverts back to some other downzoned use more than likely. Otherwise, we'd have to consider rezoning every institutional zone property in the city, which can be kind of burdensome. And so I think the best course of action is to actually add the types of housing to the institutional zone that fits that zone and, and go from there.
Hey, commissioners, any questions, comments, thoughts, discussion?
I would just say I've worked with a number of biotech-related companies and trying to work with the current zoning code is quite a challenge. So I think this is a huge step forward in making the city in, in increasing economic opportunities and development opportunities within the city.
Such a chatty bunch tonight.
Seriously.
I know, it's like. Anyway, you want to make a motion? Please do, Adrian.
Based on the information in the staff report, the information presented and the input received during the public hearing and the discussion of the commission, such that it was, I move that the planning commission recommend that the city council adopt PLN PCM 2021-00511 technology-related land uses zoning amendments as proposed.
I'll second that.
Hey, I have a motion from Adrian and a second from Carolyn. All right, we'll just go ahead and take our vote. Sarah?
Yes, and I also want to say, I really did listen to all of it, but Nick, I loved the template that you used tonight. It's new. I liked all the white space. It made my heart very happy. So that's my little two cents on that.
Thank you.
Andreas?
I will vote yes.
Thank you. John?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Agree.
Adrian?
Yes.
And Maureen?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the city council. That is the end of our agenda and our meeting tonight. Unless anyone has anything to pipe up, I'm going to call this, adjourn this meeting. Thank you all.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Nice job, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Carolyn.